And commission members that are present are myself, Shane Blazer, Jay Bemke, Tom Bray, Susan Feath, and Shane Burkhart. Then we have Lee Tao also present. Our first item on our agenda is the approval of a report from December 7th, 2020 Plan Commission meeting. What are your wishes? We have a motion by Bemke. And second by Susan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, so we also have Dan Hanson online also. Our next item on our agenda is Plan 20-0, correction, 1018, Michelle Sweeney and Virginia Shaluki, conditional use permit to operate a dog training use at 1020, 1022 West Grand Avenue, parcel ID 3401969. Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to share my screen here as it may aid in the conversation in my brief presentation. Also, Jay, I do have an extra Plan Commission packet. If you just want to reference this, feel free to come over and grab it. So the applicant who is available, I see on the Zoom call, is requesting to operate a dog training facility at the parcel identified. Upon review, a dog training facility falls underneath a commercial kennel and therefore requires a conditional use permit. Henceforth, the reason the request is before you today. You'll see on the vicinity map the location of the property. And staff has thoroughly outlined the review criteria. In the staff report, essentially, it's a multi-tenant building, about 2,500 square feet in size. I do want to note that it does have limited impervious surface, most of it, or I'm sorry, pervious surface, most of it is impervious surface, the area around the facility. And with that being said, you'll see why I've added a few conditions onto the approval, staff's recommendation for the site. The use requires six parking stalls. There are 12 on-site. And I think with the conditions that you'll see on page one of the staff report, that it is a fitting use in the area because it is Zone B2 commercial. It is currently vacant, or a portion thereof of the facility is vacant. And according to the applicant, the use would meet the needs. Again, the one concern that staff does have is for the dogs to relieve themselves, there's really limited area outside to do so. And therefore, we would request that the five conditions be added, one of which is the area in which the, is deemed the bathroom area for the dogs, be screened, surrounded entirely with a minimum three-foot-high fence, so that, again, it doesn't negatively affect the surrounding property owners. Furthermore, the outdoor dog training shall occur within a fenced area, so it doesn't interfere with any parking or circulation on-site. And that no boarding of animals shall occur on the property. I do want to note that the applicant has identified that grooming may also occur on-site, and grooming is a permitted use within the zoning code. So that could occur without any special approval. With that, we are recommending approval with those five conditions outlined on page one of the staff report on your screen.
Does anyone have any questions for Kyle? The applicants are also present online. If you have any questions. Yep, just a minute, sir. Go ahead, Susan. I think that was you.
I have a question of Kyle, and that is the definition of boarding. Does boarding help them through no daycare?
So you're questioning as to whether or not daycare is included in boarding under my condition, or within the definition in the zoning code?
Well, under the definition of the zoning code, yeah.
Yeah, so the commercial, again, there's several uses if you cite page six of the staff report. There are several uses that are included within the commercial kennel definition. And one of them is animal daycare, again, boarding kennels, dog motels, and dog training centers, which falls under the use requested. When I say boarding, I would mean that if you're dropping a dog off overnight, or you know, you're leaving town and you're dropping the dog off overnight, essentially, that that would not constitute what this approval would be. So if the boarding of dogs were to ever occur, the applicant would have to come back and make that request before the Plan Commission. I think the dog daycare, while it's mentioned and included in the definition here, I think it's, it might be somewhat difficult to define and separate with regards to the dog training use that's occurring. You know, I'm not sure if there are multiple dogs that are going through training, or if it's more individual in nature. But the applicants can certainly provide further details on the specific use on the property.
All right. Anybody else have any further questions? I know we have a member in the audience here that would like to ask one. Come up to the mic, sir. If you could identify yourself and your address, please. Oh, let's get you, turn on the mic there.
And I'm David Hopfer. I live at 1031 McKinley Street, right behind the property you're talking about. The property, that's going to be a lot of noise, the dogs running around. There's enough dogs in the neighborhood now that bark. I don't really care for that. The other option is, or problem is, it's blacktop all the way around that building. Where are the dogs gonna, what's going to happen to the dog waste? Urine, stuff like this, isn't that going to start to stink after a while? That's about the extent of it. So I would say, I wouldn't like to see it happen, so.
Okay. Do the applicants want to speak to his concern?
Yes. We've already addressed the issue of the animal waste.
What happens with dog urine?
He was asking about dog urine?
I guess I don't really have an answer for that. We have that one area on the side. I don't, I haven't been behind the building. So I don't know if that's blacktop back there, or if it's grass, or what's back there.
That's all blacktop.
Because it's covered with snow right now.
That's all blacktop. There used to be a gas station. Blacktop all the way around it. In fact, the back is all cracked up with brush. It's never been cleaned up back there, but it is blacktop.
Yeah, I don't have an answer for that. But the concern about dogs running around and barking, most of the training's going on inside. That's also been addressed. Dogs aren't just going to be running around the property. They're going to be on a leash, going from a client's car into the training facility, and then home. We're operating during normal business hours. So there will not be a huge problem with barking dogs. And even when I have group classes, I have groups of only four to six, that's the max. So there's not a huge amount of dogs there at one time. The one question that I had for the city staff is about the number three recommendation, about the outdoor training. I don't feel that one is even reasonable, because we couldn't fence anything in without impacting any of the parking. And I guess I'm questioning why that one was put in there? What is the concern with that?
So number three exists to ensure that required parking is not interfered with and access, because there are two driveways, one off of 10th Avenue North and West Grand Avenue, that if fencing is put up, again, it doesn't interfere with that parking lot circulation or the required parking on-site. Now, I know this is a multi-tenant building, and I don't believe you're utilizing the entirety of the space. So certainly, there's additional area that could be used for another business, and that business may have a separate parking requirement. So that use basically exists to ensure that, again, the parking is not interfered with and that minimum parking requirement and circulation is met on-site.
Kyle, does that mean if they don't have any outdoor dog training, would they need a fenced area? If they're not going to offer outdoor?
Well, they would still, if you read Staff Recommendation 2, where the animal bathroom area shall be, I'm recommending that it be screened with a minimum-high-three-foot fence. But that area could or could not be part of the outdoor dog training area if they so choose.
So if they're not going to train dogs outdoor, they wouldn't need an outdoor training area?
No.
For training.
They would only need, based on the recommendations, a fenced area for the dogs to relieve themselves.
Does that answer your question, Michelle?
I have to make sure I heard that right. Are you saying we don't have to have a fenced area for outdoor training?
If you're not going to offer outdoor training, then you wouldn't need a fenced area.
But if we do, I'm asking why, if we're going to be doing, say, leash work out in the parking lot, why would there need to be a fence around it? I mean, what's the reasoning that that condition was put in there?
To protect the parking area and the circulation of vehicles on-site. Given the limited area that exists, you know, for dogs to be, you know, walking around the site, you know, we, from a zoning standpoint, need to ensure that the use isn't going to affect safety in the right of way. So, again, depending on where the outdoor dog training is occurring, if it's, you know, let's say, near or adjacent to the 10th Avenue North driveway, and there are multiple dogs, even if they're on leash there and a vehicle is accessing the site, you know, we want to make sure that it's not interfering with traffic near that intersection. You know, that traffic can get out of either 10th Avenue North or West Grand Avenue and access the site without being impeded by dogs on leash or off-leash within that area. So certainly, if the Plan Commission felt as though Staff Recommendation 3 was unnecessary or wanted to clarify the area where the fencing would be required on-site, whether it be in the, you know, the north, the northwest side of the property, where there is no parking, you can certainly provide or make recommendations on that specific detail. The other thing I do want to note is that there's an error in Staff Recommendation 4. It should say, "The premise shall be kept clean and orderly." So there's a word "to" that can be removed, and "shall" shall replace that word "to."
Okay.
Sir, did you have any additional questions? Mr. Hopfer?
Is the fitness center still going to be there?
I do not know.
There's a fitness center in a big part of the building right now. And there's a tiny little building on the side of the building that used to be the office for the garage. So is the whole building going to be used as the training center? Or are they going to keep the fitness center there and just use the little bitty office as their training center?
The fitness center would be moving.
The fitness center is moving.
The fitness center is moving? That's all I got, I guess.
Thank you, sir. Does the commission, anybody on the commission have any questions or comments?
Hey, this is Susan again. I guess I do have one question. I went and viewed the property today. There seems to be a lot of refuse outside, some old tires, old furniture sitting outdoors. Is this an ownership situation, or is this a lease situation that the trainers are seeking to enter into?
The owners would be leasing the building to us.
So do you have any right of first refusal or option to rent the second portion of the building? Or is it still a situation where the owner of the building could choose to rent that second piece of the property to someone else?
It's been offered to us that we can rent it if we would like to. Right now, it's being occupied by a gentleman that has, he basically needs a physical address for his business. So he's not really there much, but he just has to have that physical address.
So it's still a prerogative of the owner of the building to re-rent that space if that would be the case, in which, in which case, you would have a difficulty securing the parking lot for dog training? You would have to share that parking lot with the second unit that would be rented. Is that not correct?
I think it's been established that we won't be doing dog training outside.
Susan, did you have anything additional?
No, I was just mulling that over.
Okay.
I would think that then, Kyle, would you not have to pull number three, the option for outdoor dog training, or would you leave it in there? I assume what I'm hearing here is that you're withdrawing your request for outdoor dog training on-site.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, I would leave it in there. Know that if the applicant occupies the entire facility, you know, they might not need all of the parking stalls on-site. They need to meet the minimum requirement, but with the owner's permission, they could possibly remove certain parking stalls. Again, if they meet the minimum, they could, you know, close one of the driveways on the property to create an outdoor training area. There are several options that they could pursue. But at a minimum, I think, given, you know, there's another space or another facility that could be leased or rented, that could change the parking component and requirements on-site, that that recommendation seems fitting. Again, however, if Plan Commission doesn't feel like it's necessarily needed, with dogs being on a leash within and around the premise, the Plan Commission can certainly remove that condition.
Thank you.
This is Shane Blazer. For me, as a dog owner too, and city ordinance is satisfied by a dog being on a leash. So if a dog's in a parking lot, they are satisfying city ordinance by, if they're being leashed. Now, if it was off-leash work, I could understand a dog being in the fenced area. But being that the dog is on a leash, I don't have an issue if the parking lot's open and clear, because it's their parking lot that they're renting, that they should bail out work and do leash, on-leash training, should that be an option. That's just my personal opinion.
Go ahead, Mr. Tao.
Okay. Back to the gentleman's question regarding dog urine. Is, I don't see anywhere in here on how to take care of that, because it's, like he had said, I live right close to that facility, and I see that it is all blacktop or cemented. So after a while, the smell is going to build up. You know, that's one of my biggest concerns, because their neighbor is right next door. It's not like it's a, you know, a big, you know, big area difference between the next-door neighbor and that facility. And after a while, how, if we don't have a plan to take care of the urine smell, it's going to affect the neighbor, you know? And then on note with that number three recommendation, I would keep it on, just because in an instance where the dog gets off the leash for some reason, the streets are right there. It's going to, the dog's going to pose an unsafe, you know, object in the road for any commuters that are traveling on those streets. And West Grand is a highly-used traffic route. So I would keep that on there, number three, I would keep that on there. And then I think we have to go back to the issue of the dog urine and the smell that, you know, how are they going to take care of that before we would say, before I would be comfortable in approving this? Because I know that most of the neighbors that live around there, they do have dogs, but I hardly see them, the dogs outside, so.
Well, dogs are required to be on leash, so that shouldn't be an issue at all. City ordinance, they have to be on leash. And I require it through my business, my protocol. I require clients to leave their dogs on leash.
Yes, but that doesn't mean the dog's going to get away.
As far as the urine, they do make things to neutralize urine odor. So if we were to clean with something like that, that would neutralize it, that could possibly be the solution to that.
Well, the fencing issue is just in case if the dogs get away, because, you know, that could happen. And then that would pose a risk to the commuters using those two streets.
That could happen anywhere. That could happen to anyone walking their dog down the street. They could get away from their owner.
Yes, and that's why I would recommend keeping that fenced.
It normally does not happen.
And if it does, that's a highly, you know, traffic area. That's the concern.
Correct.
Yep, I would concur that we would keep number three on there, just due to the high-traffic area. And many of the dogs in training would be young dogs who have a propensity to possibly break free from their owner prior to their full training.
Mr. Burns? If I may address the animal urine and feces. So number four, the recommended condition, "The premise shall be kept clean and orderly, including disposal of animal waste daily." That includes urine and/or feces within that fenced area where the bathroom area is designated on-site. And our office, the Community Development Department, has the authority to review and enforce these conditions. So in the event that a neighbor complained about this area, the fenced-in area for the dog bathroom is not being kept orderly or, you know, having smells associated, it would be the authority of the Community Development Department to inspect the property, to ensure that that condition, that number four condition, is being met, and to converse with the property owner, in this instance, the applicant, to remind them that, you know, it has to be kept clean, and basically to enforce those conditions. So I, you know, I think with condition four, that that would be, that would be appropriate with regards to the animal waste. But certainly, you can clarify the waste if you want, or provide an additional level of detail as to what the commission feels comfortable with.
Mr. Hopfer, did you have another question?
My question is, has anybody actually seen the property to be used for an animal training area?
I've never been inside it, but I've been outside.
I would recommend you go look at it and try to figure out how you're going to train animals in the area that you're talking about. That's my question.
You're talking about the inside area?
Boy, inside's fine. I'm talking about outside.
We've already said we won't train outside because there's no fence. So that's a non-issue.
Well, I just recommend people go look at the property, walk it, and take a good look at it. That's my, that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else on the commission? Have any questions or comments? Hearing none, I entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
We have a motion by Bemke to approve as, with all the conditions?
With all the conditions, yes.
Okay.
Second from Burkhart.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Bemke made the motion.
Second from Burkhart.
Thank you, Shane. So is the motion a second? Is there any further discussion? I guess my only comment is that I'm not in favor of the outdoor training fenced area, because we're being more restrictive than we restrict any other dog owner in the city. You know, any dogs required to be on a leash. And we're being more restrictive. So I'm not in favor of that, but I will not vote against this for that reason. So I guess, hearing no further discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is Plan 20-1020, Wisconsin Rapids Public School District, conditional use permit to expand the outdoor recreational facilities at 1801 16th Street South, parcel ID 3414751. Mr. Burns?
Again, there's a, there's a high level of detail provided in the staff report. Essentially, the school district and a consultant hired to do some preliminary drawings is requesting to expand those outdoor rec fields. They're looking to construct two ball fields, baseball and two softball fields, to construct a concessions building, and do some other minor improvements, possibly expand the parking lot on the southernmost part of the site. And then some, again, other minor improvements such as fencing and lighting on-site. This is what the site looks like today. And the high school operates as a conditional use. Any change to the existing character of the facility requires a conditional use permit amendment. Henceforth, the request is before you today. With that being said, we've looked at it through the lens of the conditional use, but as well as site plan review, because there are new facilities being added. And I will note that, at this point, there's not a high level of detail that's been provided with regards to the concessions building or the parking lot. For example, there's some missing details on the site plan for the parking lot, and there's, a landscaping plan has not been submitted, nor has a lighting plan or building renderings for the concession building. And staff, I think, still feels as though it's appropriate to approve the project, giving staff the authority to review and approve those other plans once they're submitted. However, if the Plan Commission does not feel like it is appropriate to approve both the conditional use and the site plan approval, they can certainly separate the two items. Again, with that being said, though, Uh, again, with that being said, though, um, it, uh, it seems fitting that this, uh, this conditional use be approved, given the use is already occurring on site, um, given there's a lot of infrastructure in place, uh, that can accommodate the use and, uh, the surrounding properties, uh, that are either vacant or under ownership of the school district or the city. So it shouldn't necessarily be, uh, negative to the surrounding property owners. And, uh, again, we feel as though, uh, as staff, that it, it is appropriate. Uh, the last thing I want to note prior to my recommendation is that there is a portion of the property that, uh, falls outside of the city limits. Uh, on the map, you'll see, uh, the southeast side of the property falls within the town. Uh, the school district at this point has indicated that they may pursue annexation of that area. However, uh, the approval, uh, if, if it occurs for the conditional use in the site plan would not necessarily include that area until such time as it's annexed to the city. So I have added condition one, which states precisely that, that, uh, the plans that have been submitted include this area. Uh, but again, because it's outside of our jurisdiction, uh, we can't technically approve it, um, but I've added that condition stating that if it is annexed in the future, the plan submitted, uh, today, uh, would be approved for that area. And again, here is the, uh, the site plan that's been submitted, um, of the area. And here would be the area that would fall in the town, which is primarily the, uh, the second baseball field area. With that being said, again, we are recommending approval with the conditions outlined on the first page of the staff report.
Thank you, Kyle. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Shane, go ahead.
I guess before we get too deep into this conversation, is there anybody from the school board that wishes to speak on this?
I don't think anybody's here. Nope. Any commissioners or anyone else have any questions or comments? Yeah, go ahead, or.
My name's Eric Dovin, I live on 21st Place, which is kind of around the corner. I guess we just had questions about, um, I know in the noise order and ordinance, it's about, um, sporting events is out, is kind of exempt. I didn't know if since this was also other users such as, you know, the men's league or bar league, if it would be any conditions for noise. And then also with ingress, egress coming in, I know that Grove Street is closed right now just by barricades. I didn't know if there was gonna be, or why that's closed, or if there'd be anything in the future if that would open, because then there'd be a lot more traffic coming down that way. I know it was closed for a while there, you may have some more info on that, but, um, I just didn't know if there's anything about coming in off of Grove, if it would be open or how that would go.
Shane, you want to add something? What's that?
Do you want to address that, or?
Uh, yeah, I, as far as I've not heard anything about Grove ever being open to 21st Place yet, I don't know if anyone else has heard anything. Or through the course of this conversation, I have not heard it being either, but, and do you know why it's closed?
Why is, because it's not a thorough street.
And so 21st doesn't go, doesn't meet up with Grove?
21st and Grove do meet there, but that's not, I believe the only time, and maybe you've been there since, I believe when the, um, state cross-country meet has, they open it up as a shortcut for buses. Other than that, there's no thoroughfare there, correct?
Yeah, from time to time, people will go through around.
But, but it's, it's barricaded off and the only time that I know of that they open it is for the state cross-country meet. I guess the, the other thing is, is, so I'm kind of on the fringes of this, I have, I have not heard any discussion of men's leagues.
Yeah, me neither.
This is all youth sports, as far as I know.
Yeah, I haven't heard of any, uh, I think the least, the intent of, what I understand is that they're still gonna use Mead as, as those field. The, I think the oldest that would play there might be some college, uh, in the spring, I've heard, but nothing as in the, the bar leagues or the, the men and women softball leagues. Uh, they still have the Two Diamonds at Mead. But I, I guess that's a good question, I don't know, i- was that a council decision to keep Grove closed off or keep those two? Yeah, I'm not sure either, that's a good question.
I, I think there's, they're still in the, pretty early in the planning stages for sewer and water and the improvements out there, and I think some of the details will come out in that. But my opinion is, and I hope you shared, is it's a, it's a good project. The, I, I think as, as some of the information comes in, I think we'll have a better handle on what's, what's gonna happen with the street over there.
That's a good question, though. Let me write that one down. Go ahead, Susan.
Um, I guess I, I would like to say that I think it's a good project, however, I would very much like to see all of the, the pieces that would normally come back to planning commission come back rather than be routed directly to staff, so that we might have a, a look at any other concerns that, um, general community members might have with regard to, um, a variety, variety of issues.
You even get your car warranty on Zoom.
He's gonna infiltrate it.
Why, they found even how to get us on Zoom. I lost my thought, I'm sorry. Uh, Su, I guess Kyle, Susan had some questions regarding, um, you know, I think in, uh, the recommendations allowing, um, community development department to make approvals, and I believe she's talking about maybe that some of those things should come back to planning commission? Correct me if I'm wrong, Susan?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and the reason, the reason for my recommendations to approve the site plan is, is that the school district, I believe, uh, they don't necessarily know if they're pursuing the parking lot at this point, but wanted to show it on the preliminary plan. Uh, furthermore, the concession building as an accessory structure and internal to the site, uh, doesn't necessarily have, or i- just given the proximity that exists in the vacant land of the east, isn't necessarily going to affect, negatively affect the surrounding property owners, again, given its internal location on the site. Uh, so staff felt as though that, uh, because of that, it, it was appropriate to approve the project, including the site plan review, uh, allowing staff to ensure that, again, lighting, parking lot standards, architectural standards for the concession building are met. But again, uh, if you guys, uh, do not feel comfortable with doing that, you can remove, uh, what would be conditions, uh, four, five, and seven, and eight. Four, five, seven, eight. Or simply just, uh, just recommend approving, um, the conditional use permit, um, and not the, the site plan review.
Well, I would be willing to, um, move, um, or, or to, to support a, um, conditional use plan if these particular items came back to the full commission for review before approval.
Yeah, there's, uh, a great collaborative effort that, uh, this community needs, and , uh, we should do nothing to slow it down. I have no problems taking a look at, uh, concession stand later on, but I'm sure that it would be able to fit into any type of zoning, uh, regulations that we have. We should, uh, uh, move, move forward and, and approve the project so that, uh, all the parties that need be can move.
Thank you, Tom. I guess, is there a motion?
I thought I sort of said that, but.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was gonna just ask that also, if Susan, if yours was a motion. So your, your motion was to approve the conditional use plan specifically.
On the condition that it come back.
So, okay, so specifically, um, the staff recommendation number one? I'm trying to pull this up.
And Mayor, there, there technically should be a public hearing for this item as well, so if you want to open the public hearing and.
I didn't see that in the agenda. My computer decided to lock up.
So would you like, Shane, would you like me to withdraw that motion?
No, if that's what your motion is, that's good, I was just gonna make sure that we're on the same page.
Okay.
As to what the motion was, I'm just trying to. Yeah, that's correct, Kyle, should we have the public hearing first?
The motion can be made as long as it's not acted upon, but the public hearing should be opened and, and then closed if there's.
So I don't, since we don't have a second, Susan, would you withdraw your motion? Then we'll have a public hearing and, and then we can, uh, if that works.
Withdrawn.
Okay, thank you, and then we can come back to it. So, uh, let's open up the public hearing at 4:43. Is there anybody that wishes to speak against the project? What's that, Tom? I know, that's why I was wondering too, Tom, because it's not listed as a public hearing on the agenda, correct?
That, that would be my question.
That's correct, it is not identified as a public hearing on the agenda, however, there was a, a public hearing notice that was provided, what would have been two weeks ago and posted at City Hall and in the newspaper. If, uh, if it's deemed that you'd rather hold the public hearing, we can certainly avert it to common council for each item, considering all three items are going to come in council regardless.
Yeah, I think since it's not specifically listed on the agenda, we should probably not hold a public hearing and then address each item on the city council agenda.
That would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you, Tom. So, we can still send a recommendation of a motion to the council, correct? Kyle?
Yes.
Okay. So how about, let's entertain a motion regarding the conditional use permit for the outdoor recreational facility.
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit for the outdoor recreational facility.
And recommendations, staff recommendations, or?
Um, I guess if, if, if we want to come back and look at those, we can hold those just so we get the conditional use permit.
So that, Kyle, that would be option, item one of your recommendation, to approve that conditional use permit?
Yes.
I would second that.
Is that correct, Kyle?
Yep, I was just gonna say, you know, you could group items two through eight, uh, is only applicable to the site plan review. Again, recommendations two through eight would essentially be applicable to, uh, site plan review.
So that's kind, how's that different than just approving? Option one, I guess you got me confused a little bit here.
So there's, there's been a motion to, to approve the request, correct?
Correct, the conditional use permit.
Yep, the conditional use permit. And recommendation, uh, or condition one, uh, includes, uh, again, the conditional use permit shall only apply to those lands within the city of Wisconsin Rapids, however, if annexation of adjacent property occurs prior to the construction of improvements, this permit, the conditional use permit, shall extend, extend to those annexed lands as shown. So if the conditional use permit is being recommended for approval, then condition one, uh, I would recommend that condition one be, uh, be applicable to the permit because conditions two through eight more so, uh, align with the site plan approval.
So then we'll take that up at a different commission meeting?
Yes.
Two through eight, okay. But I, I know for the fact that, like, number two is already being worked on, those permits are already being, but, uh, but let's deal with the first staff recommendation of approving the conditional use permit, and then we'll bring back the other items to plan commission. I think, uh, Mr. Dovin's question, we need to get, have that answered too by then at our next meeting with, uh, the intent of the intersection of Grove and 21st Place. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Item number four is Plan 20-1034, Bulk Storage Inc., conditional use permit to construct the storage building for bio solids on city property located at the unaddressed parcel along 21st Avenue North, parcel ID 3400279. Mr. Kerns.
Sorry about that. So this item is submitted, uh, by the wastewater department, um, they've hired a contractor to construct a, uh, except, well, I guess what would be the principal building, because there are no other buildings on the property. Uh, but essentially, it's a, it's a building to cover the, the sludge, uh, that's a byproduct, uh, of the wastewater department, uh, basically to, to store the dried material under this building, uh, at the property identified. The structure is, uh, fairly large at about seventy by, seventy feet by a hundred and twelve feet. Uh, the property is Zoned M1, General Industrial District. Uh, furthermore, the, the structure is primarily made of a, a steel shell with, uh, concrete walls and it'll sit on a, a concrete pad or slab. Uh, again, currently there are no other, other buildings on the property and the area surrounding this property that you see on the screen is primarily used for similar uses, whether it's, you know, the city's gravel pit, uh, or other wastewater uses on the property. So from a use standpoint, it's already occurring. You can see again where, where the, the sludge has been stored, uh, in previous years, and, uh, it shouldn't negatively affect the surrounding property owners and therefore is a fitting use for the property, and staff would recommend, uh, approval with, uh, the two conditions on page one of the staff report.
Thank you. Does anyone from the commission have any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion. I'd be willing to make that motion laser to approve a conditional use permit to construct that storage building for bio solids on city property at that unaddressed parcel on 21st Avenue. We have a second by Bemke. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye? Uh, any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is number five, Plan 20-1033, Alliance Development, Site Plan Review to Construct a Starbucks Building at 1810 through 1830, A Street South, on parcel IDs 3411723 and 3411724. Mr. Kerns?
Thank you. So this is a, a request for, again, site plan and architectural review for a Starbucks coffee shop, uh, at the vicinity shown on the map. It's important to note that the, the existing building would be demolished to accommodate the use, and the, the applicant has submitted a, uh, a site plan and, and renderings of the use, uh, on additional pages of the packet. Ultimately, uh, well, I can probably go to it here, um, the. of the packet. Ultimately, well, I can probably go to it here. The, the development will incorporate a drive-through on the south side of the site. It'll shrink two of the existing driveways down to one on 8th Street, and then there'll be another one on, on 7th Streets as well. And the drive-through, again, will wrap around the south side of the building. They've submitted a, a complete plan set landscaping. They, they did not submit lighting at this point, so staff would recommend that a lighting plan be submitted as well. But we feel as though it's an appropriate use for the property that's zoned commercial in nature and has very similar uses within the vicinity, other restaurant-type uses. The one thing to note is that the, the applicant has submitted one of, of three renderings that Starbucks potentially would, would utilize. So there are, there are two other renderings that could be a potential for the exterior facade materials used on the final building. We, we've only, again, received this copy at this point, but staff would recommend that if Starbucks decided to go with any other of the, the two other renderings, that staff have the authority to, to approve such renderings, as long as they meet the architectural conditions, which, again, we've, we've noted as part of the staff report. With that being said, we would recommend approval with the recommendations on page one of the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Kearns. Does anyone have any questions or comments, or any representative from Starbucks that wish to speak?
I'm, hi, I'm Susan Hirschberg. I'm the architect, working on the building shell. As Kyle instructed, there are three options for the exterior. It really is just a color variation of the brick and of the wood and of the IFES material. It doesn't change the, the makeup of the facade. It still would have the same ratio of brick, wood, and IFES. It's just a matter of color.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the architect? Anyone have any other questions?
Shane, this is Susan again. I have one question, and that is, I was out there today, and I note that the property, the two entry points on 8th Street are, one of them is beyond the, the exchange that allows you to turn left onto 7th Street if you're going north. And the other one is at the south edge of the 8th Street frontage. Did somebody check on traffic safety at that point to make sure that, that this new midway point is in compliance or, or feasible with that, that strange exchange that allows people to turn left onto Taylor?
I could answer that, Susan. My name, this is Joel Airp, I'm with MOC for Engineering. We were given, giving Susan a hand with site plans. So we've been, we've shifted the, the new driveway to avoid that median, and we've been working with the city's engineering department on that as well. What we're proposing is a, one lane to enter, or ingress to the site, and then we're going to have a left turn and a right turn lane, so that we try to avoid some congestion and coming in and going out of the facility. But we have been working with the, the city's engineering department on that.
Good. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
If I recall, I think that's how McDonald's has it, one coming in, left and right going out.
Yeah, our, again, as, as he stated, our engineering department has taken a look at a few alternatives, and I believe they were okay with the more recent one that was submitted. And there were some turning radiuses that the applicant presented to our engineer, engineering department, and they have such been approved.
Excellent. Thank you. Any further questions, commission? I keep forgetting to ask Tom if he has any questions.
Dog in the machine?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Tom Riell, yep.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Okay.
All right, no, anyway.
Sounds good.
I would make a motion to approve. This is Burkhardt.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion to approve, and we have a second by Mr. Tau. Is there any further questions? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much for appearing, Joel and Susan. We look forward to seeing improvement, improvements on the property.
Thank you.
All right, on to our last item, which, well, one of our last items, Plan 20-0720, Community Development Department, action on a request to amend the zoning code, Chapter 11 of the municipal code, to modify the secondary review requirements for uses. Mr. Kearns?
Thank you. Again, this, this item was postponed for the second time, to be discussed now. I think previously I asked if there was more information or, or any, any other assistance that staff would, could provide. I did not receive any additional contact from Plan Commission members or alders regarding the item, so what you've been provided is the same information that was provided previously. I think we left off wondering whether or not we wanted to go through each individual item, whether, again, we, we separated by, by item type, you know, residential or, or retail or, or restaurant or manufacturing, or, or, you know, we, we just go down the list here with the 40 that I've recommended and give, you know, give yes or no responses. I think, based on the input that I've received over the course of the last, what would amount to four months, given some of the hesitation, the discussions, just given the, the postponement of, of this twice now, and, and being there was a month in between the, the original postponement, you know, I, I, I get the sense that there isn't a huge comfort level to do this, even in a minimal fashion. And if it's, if it's done in a minimal fashion, I somewhat think that it, maybe it shouldn't be done at all. So I would almost advise, again, based on the history of how we've gotten to this point, to possibly recommend withdrawing any changes to, to the zoning code, in particular the uses that are recommended here. Maintain the, the same structure that we currently have for site plan review, again, very similar to what we just approved in Starbucks, and again, not pursue any ordinance amendment at this time. Again, however, I would entertain any questions or further conversation if you have them.
This is Burkhardt. I, Kyle, I appreciate what you just said there, and I think that, you know, we're relatively new to our, our new zoning ordinance, and I think we should give it some time and, and go with what we took a very long time to develop and, and see how it goes without changing it right away.
Thank you, Mr. Burkhardt. Any further comments? I do agree that what Mr. Burkhardt just said, I think maybe we should see where the, the code develops into over the next period of time, and then kind of reevaluate things at that point. We don't need a motion or anything, do we, Kyle?
I don't think it would hurt, just so we have a record of the, of the item. However, if, if you don't want to act, you know, it, it doesn't matter either.
Yeah.
I make, I make a motion to table this issue.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Susan. We have a motion and a second to table the item. Is there any further, just, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Given that typically you, you table an item for a definitive timeline, and the way it sounds, this would be indefinite, that we would be tabling this indefinitely, typically when you table an item, you're, you're going to come back to it in the future. I would almost say if you're going to make a motion to just, again, how awkward it is, motion to approve it and then cast your vote to...
To deny?
To deny, yeah. Otherwise, like I said, I don't think it makes a difference if you don't act on it. But if you do act on it and it fails, we then have a record of the item, and it kind of puts a, you know, puts a stop to it essentially, whereas tabling keeps the door open and doesn't put it to rest.
So actually, Susan, if you're willing to withdraw your second, and Jay's willing to withdraw his motion, and then we can...
That's fine.
That's fine with me, too.
Okay. So then why don't I make a motion to approve, approve the, I guess, what was the original request? If I can find my agenda here. I'll make a motion to approve modifying the zoning code to modify the secondary review requirement for, for uses.
Second.
We have a motion by Blazer, second by Bemke. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we have one, one aye, and all, all opposed, say nay.
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 So motion...
Do we need a roll call?
I'm sorry.
Do we have enough of the nays, or do we need to roll call it?
Yeah, there's one aye, and then it sounded like the rest were, were nays. So motion failed. And we're, brings us to our last item, which is adjournment. We have a motion by Bemke, second by Tau. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Thank you, everybody, for your time. We'll see you next meeting.